Our 4:30 council work session. Would you read the role, please?
Okay, Ms. Cole here.
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 Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Welcome to the adjournment.
Second.
All favor. Carries, we're here today to have a couple of two different things. The goals and priorities that council set for yourselves back a couple of months ago in adopting those officially. Also, Susie proposed new bid opening procedures. Susie?
Well, we'll start with the goals. All of you should have received the document that was put together by Jeff Shot. And today what I'd kind of like to discuss more than what's actually in this goal, or in my opinion, these are priorities more so than goals, but it is kind of what council wants from staff and how you would like us to proceed with moving forward with these priorities. The beginning is simply just kind of recapping how we, what process we took to come up with these, and then a very long list of accomplishments, which is quite impressive. And then there's a list of the issues and concerns and trends and opportunities that we see coming or that we're currently dealing with. And then if you get to page 11, you see the ongoing commitments and priorities that staff is currently working on and that council has been supportive of and that will be ongoing. And page 12 is where the three items that you voted on to say were your top priorities, basically for the next two years that you want staff working on. The first one being evaluating the city pay system and develop programs to address the compression issues, do a compen-- I cannot talk today. A compensation study, our pay scales, look at our performance evaluations, and look at the possibility of a merit-based pay, also doing a job audit and revised job description based on job duties. That's the first item, which is several items that will equal one big project. The second and third items were actually tied via your votes, which would be looking into the possibility of a transfer station and also developing communication strategies for the city as far as marketing and an image campaign. And then there, as you guys know, there were several other items that were right there that you guys definitely supported but didn't rise to the top. So these are primarily staff's main three focuses. What I would like to propose, and I'm certainly open to any suggestions, is that on a quarterly basis, we, obviously staff will be working on it nonstop going forward, but on a quarterly basis, we come and kind of give progress reports as to what we're doing, what, and get direction from council on a quarterly basis as to where we're going with achieving the priorities that you guys have listed. But I'm certainly open to however you would like to, like us to proceed with these things. I, you know, initially, it's probably going to be looking at how to lay the groundwork for these projects, and then obviously, funding and that sort of stuff will come as we go forward. But there's going to definitely need to be some investigation stages where we look into what these projects would entail and how broad you guys want them. So I am open to suggestions, but that is, that is what I would suggest is just a quarterly update where we come and tell you, based on these three priorities, where we are and what we're doing and how it's coming. I think these are all very large projects that certainly should be able to get underway. One, maybe two of them could get wrapped up in 24 months, but they're pretty, pretty big projects, so I think they're, they'll involve several departments and they're definitely not just a one-man thing, so we'll probably put some teams together to work on the different items and bring them forward.
Susie, I guess, you know, I've been pushing for a transfer station forever, but at the same time, I don't want to waste staff time on a transfer station if it's not going to happen in the CIP program. So I question whether we want to really look into that if it's not going to happen anyway.
You guys voted on it.
As a staff representative, I think that's exactly what we want you to do is put that on here so that we start trying to figure out how to work it into the CIP program.
Right.
Oh, I was, I was looking at the CIP's program that you sent us, and I didn't even see transfer station even written down.
Well, that's just for 2015.
And that's just for this coming up fiscal year, so a transfer station, and I know very little about it, is going to be such a big project that there would be a year of planning prior to needing funds, so if we can start working on it now to get all that studying done, then we would put it in next year's CIP for fiscal year.
Okay, because it'll take two.
Or some future year, right? Sixteen, yeah.
We know when, but.
Yeah, we know it'll be two years plus whenever we start, just talking.
But we've got to start somewhere, and I think you guys voting that four out of, at least four out of, well, how many were, six were there, so at least four out of the six voted that this is one of the top priorities, so we need to start looking into it and see what it'll entail and what kind of paths it'll be involved and what process it would take to get there.
As far as the rest of you are concerned, that would be one of my top priorities, but I'm only one of seven, so.
Susie, if I could.
Yep.
Yeah, I think doing a quarterly update, I think that's a great idea. The other thought I've got is, you know, looking at those three items, what I would suggest we consider is maybe assigning a couple, two or three councilmen to each one of those projects, too. I know that, that item number one, I mean, that's right, Carol and Sally and Quentin's Alley, I mean, they have more expertise, more knowledge on that. That transfer station, I'm real interested in that, and I think, and I know Ron is, and I think, you know, part of that conversation may or may not be affected by the discussion about other options with waste management, so maybe we don't even go that far. I mean, who knows, but, but, and then the third item, our marketing folks, whoever might have an interest in that.
I would.
You know, and having council as part of that whole conversation, two or three in each one of those three items, I think that would be a good place to start, too, give us a little bit more ownership.
I would recommend two, just so that we can keep it internal and have work meetings without having to.
Three or two gabby, is that what you're trying to say?
No.
No, I'm just thinking, instead of having to have council meetings on them, I think we'd be better off just being able to pull staff together when needed and then advise, because obviously, we'll come back to the public meetings on a quarterly basis and let everybody know what our update is on them, keep them productive, so I'm, I'm.
I mean, that'd be my suggestion.
I like it.
How do you want to decide who's going to be assigned to which team?
Well, let's see, show of hands, who would like item number one?
Which was?
The compensation.
Performance pay and that type of thing, I mean, I think Quentin's Alley.
That's my second choice.
Yeah. They've been the most vocal on those items.
No, we haven't.
I don't.
David's been pretty vocal on that, too, so.
Well, yeah, he talked about the whole, you know.
Option number three is my favorite. I'll take number one if I have to.
One's fine, I'd be.
What would you like?
I'd like one and three. I'll go anywhere that my assistants is needed.
Good man.
Correct answer.
Except for number two.
That's right, you're not around that way, I'd number two.
Suzie, I want to be number two. Number two.
You can't, there's no.
I'm still not clear on who's on one. I'm not sure who's on first or.
Quentin is on number one. I'll be number one, and I'll be ex officio for number three.
Okay, so I have Mr. Morrissey and Mr. Hart for item one, Ms. Cole and Mr. Jones for item three, which says to tie, which would be the communication strategy, and transfer station, I've heard Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Welper.
I'd like to.
I can't do that.
Why?
I don't remember.
I'm not on number three.
Eric, number one.
One and number two.
Yeah, we may have to do three on some of them. It's completely up to you guys.
Mr. Welper, would you like to do it? I'm not interested in any of those.
Excellent. That works out very good.
That's very good. Excellent.
He had everything else.
Excellent. That works out.
Okay. Got my marching orders. So we'll, we'll work internally with, with the different department heads and find out who internally should be on which ones of these and create it.
Sounds too much like my regular job.
You're not going to give it to me. Just so we can be consistent in the way we talk about these, these are not necessarily goals, these are priority projects.
Right. In my opinion, yes. That's what these are. These are, these are projects and priorities that council voted that they would like staff efforts placed into these items, at least, and I think quarterly will be a good way to find out, you know, we may very well get into one or two or three of these and decide, you know, looking at it is all we want to do, and now it's not, you know, not the time to move forward, but, which is why I think it's a good idea to come back quarterly and share what we've found out. The next section on here is organizational effectiveness, and I think we're certainly doing several of these as we go, reviewing code enforcement activities. I think our ordinances are a prime example of working on trying to clean up some of the ordinances to get that going. We're going to talk about the bid process on there, so we've definitely worked on two of those. I think item five will tie back into your number one priority, and so we're working on them, and again, I think during those quarterly updates, we can also let council know how we're doing on those.
And that first bullet on economic development, Noel and I had a conversation about that just last week, so we're getting closer to being able to make a recommendation on that.
Fabulous. And some notes, comments. That's all I have on the goals unless anybody else has any other suggestions or whatnot, I think.
Let's start with that.
Okay. I think that's a good starting point.
So your next step, Susie, will be to put that on the council agenda for adoption, is that correct? Why am I so loud? Is that the way it's supposed to be?
Susie was really loud, too.
I don't have a microphone. Is that better? Okay.
Is the microphone like right?
Yes, I, we can certainly do a motion on, I can put it on next week's council agenda to adopt council pri, the council priorities list.
Okay, I mean, per Mr. Shot, that was the next step, was to actually adopt it.
Yes.
Officially so that they become a priority.
Yep. Yep, so we'll, we'll just do a motion to do that next week. I didn't put it on this one in case we wanted to change anything of how it was ordered or not, but I think we're sitting good there. The other item on the agenda, we'll move into that, is the council meetings, bid openings. I, based upon some of the feedback that I've had from the mayor and council and staff and your goal-setting session, I looked into our bid process and looked into what other cities our size are doing, the ones, there was not a single city that I contacted and got information from that opens their bids actually at the meetings. Everyone that I contacted opens them prior to the meeting on a day earlier and then actually does the bid tab at the public hearings, which seems like a much more efficient way to do things rather than struggling to open them and whether they're added up or not added up and that sort of thing. So what I am proposing is that we do a resolution setting the data hearing just like we do now, and then at least 10 days, obviously, there's some times where we don't have the bid opening two weeks out, it's, it's three or four, and if that happens, obviously, the stay will move, but at least 10 days out, on every Thursday at 3 o'clock, we'll designate that as our bid opening time at City Hall. It'll be posted based on what council has set by resolution. It'll be a public meeting, anybody's welcome to attend. All that will be done at those meetings is that the bids are opened and recorded and handed to the department head. And then the following Monday, we will hold the, the public hearing and do everything just like we do now, but rather than opening all the bids, we'll read the bid tab so that you'll get all the, the amounts. And then typically, the following week, the department head will submit a resolution to award the contract to whoever the vendor is that won the hearing or the bid opening. They can, and other cities do, if there was a need to, if it's a project that needs to move forward faster, we would be in compliance if at that public hearing after we've read the bid tab, if they actually did a resolution to award the bid as well. I don't think that'll be our standard process, but in, in instances where things need to move quickly, something is broken, needs fixed, that sort of thing, we certainly can, which would shorten our timeframe for turnaround on getting projects going.
Susie, how does, how does this compare to the current time it takes? Are we just, are we just saying that instead of being in a council meeting where we're bidding for police uniforms and alternates, we're not going to listen to all 40 alternates at that time, we'll do it at another time, but how does, how does the timeframe compare?
In general, the timeframe would be exactly the same. However, it does give us the option of trimming a week off of that turnaround. So for instance, something like police uniforms, where maybe there is no reason to go out to that third week and, you know, it's not a big construction project where there's a lot to review and that sort of stuff, after the public hearing and after the reading of the bid tab, the department head could submit to award the bid that night, so it could trim a week off of the process. And that is how.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Sorry. This is remains for items $25,000 or more.
This is for all the, the bid processes that come to council, so they're all $25,000 or more, correct?
The same dollars.
Yep. Yep.
Basically, the only thing that's happening is removing the bid opening from Monday to council meeting to Thursday at 3 o'clock and giving the opportunity to have it done to, to award the bid and not have to read the bid tabs.
The benefits for that is, one, I think it'll improve accuracy as staff, once they're open, we'll have time to actually review the bids so that we make sure we're reading the correct amounts and that they're added up correctly and all of that sort of stuff rather than opening them and trying to decipher them. Sitting right here, we'll be able to, by the time we bring the bid tab to council, if there was an error in it or, or whatnot, we'd be able to say that publicly at the meeting. We do have instances where a contractor or somebody will submit a bid and they haven't added up their totals right or that sort of stuff, but we've already read it in the public hearing what their amount was, so obviously, it'll still be open in the public and their bid is what it is, but we'll know if there's any discrepancies by the time we get to council for the public hearing.
Does anybody have any further comments regarding that policy?
Yes. I think this is a move toward efficiency and streamlining because there was a day when Mr. Getty read every single cigarette permit. They were not part of the consent agenda, so I think this is a step in the right direction.
This is kind of modernizing, as Susie said, Susie and I've gone over this several times, and there, there isn't any other city that we found that opens their bids at the council meeting. They're all done sometime prior to the council meeting, whether it's earlier on Monday or Friday or Thursday or whatever day their council meets, always prior to that. And it just seems like it makes a much more efficient process. So we will have this on for next Monday to approve this procedure.
Well, Susie, would this change at all if there comes a time when we actually do have those computers right in front of us?
You'd be able to see the bid tab in front of you. I would still need to read it publicly and to record what all the bids were so that the public gets it as well, but. Eric. I'll pretend I'm the mayor.
Eric Thorst, you know, we just had a question, we didn't get much chance to look at this, but Susie and I have been talking about some things before. We certainly support this, but we were just kind of wondering why Thursday, why 3 o'clock? That seems like kind of an odd time, it's right in the middle of the afternoon, if you're busy and doing that sort of thing, or at least during the construction season, a lot of people are out, they've got to come back. We were sort of thinking like maybe 1 o'clock or 4 o'clock or something, I didn't know if there was some particular reason for that particular day of time, it just.
There was no particular reason for the, for the day or the time, Eric, quite honestly. We, we, first of all, talked about Friday, and we thought about all of the hassles that go along with Friday, and a lot of times, if people take days off and long weekends, they take Friday afternoons off, so we kind of ruled Friday out, and if we, 3 o'clock was strictly arbitrary, and we just thought it was during working hours, and maybe people would be more apt to come, because rarely do we get contractors to come to Monday night during off-working hours, so we thought maybe if we had them during working hours, contractors would actually come.
And I'm certainly open to 4 o'clock if we wanted to.
Yeah, I guess we kind of figured the Friday thing, but it was just a time of 3 o'clock. We just thought, at least for us, because we get very busy and brownfield people.
Would you recommend four then?
Would four be better or one be better? One or four, just so it's not right in the middle of the afternoon, it kind of interrupts whatever you're doing. Picture, picture choice. So I don't really care, and I guess, I guess one, I can think one will be better, because that way you can have, maybe have the bids due at noon, and then you've got it organized by one or something, I don't know, of course, that's kind of your lunch hour, too, so I'm trying to, I think we prefer the, the beginning of the afternoon and the end, probably more the beginning.
I'm certainly okay with 1 o'clock. Again, there was no, with no really reason to put it at 3 o'clock. Anybody have any heartburn with that at all?
One is fine.
We're going to make it.
Four is against it.
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock and they'll be due at noon because we'll need a little bit of time to do the bid tab, so.
Further comments on, we're going to, yes, Eric.
Eric Thorst, just how quickly we put this, we've got a project, we're about ready to bring to council, and we need to get it into documents, we're going to change this pretty quickly, so, it's our next pump station project, so Jamie was just asking me this morning, and I said, well, I think I'll have more information tonight, but.
Are you setting it next week?
I think that was the plan.
My thought was anything that's set next week, we're not going to worry about the new.
Well, it needs to bring it to council next Monday to set the date.
Right, anything that's through next week that's set, I wasn't going to mess with just because a lot of people have already been drafting those documents and stuff, so we'll give time to make the change, so.
After the 28th.
Yep.
Very good. Any further comments? Is a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, for adjourn, thank you. To add committee meetings and agenda meetings, I'm still going to affirm that I would prefer not to do agenda meetings, and so far, I haven't gotten that overridden by any of the council members, but I thought the committee meetings, you know, the guys are already here televising the, what did we just do, work sessions, and they're here televising the council sessions, so they just got to stand up there and keep the cameras on and do the committee meeting, so we're at least going to try with televised. Stand up there and keep the cameras on and do the committee meeting, so we're at least going to try with televised. of Waterloo City Council. We have a nice crowd here tonight, and welcome to those of you that might be watching us, our public access television channel. Mayor Clerk, would you start us by reading the role, please?
Certainly. Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Thank you very much. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment with a silent reflection or woman with a hat on, if you'd please remove that, thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by our city clerk, Ms. Susie Schirp. Susie, please.
Please join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and may you succeed. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hart. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of April 14, 2014's regular session. Very good. Thank you, Councilman Hart. Council, do you have any comments or concerns regarding the agenda or the tenants? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have one proclamation tonight, and I'm going to ask our own Paul Hudding to step to the front to accept it, please. Paul, as our director of leisure services and as of late director of everything trees, tonight's proclamation is to celebrate Arbor Week in Waterloo. So we have a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas trees provide a pleasing environment in Waterloo for the benefit of our residents and visitors, and whereas trees contribute greatly to Waterloo's positive image, and whereas the optimum reforestation of Waterloo will require public participation and cooperation resulting in an attractive community, and whereas the Iowa legislature has designated the last Friday in April as Arbor Day throughout Iowa. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, hereby proclaim the week of April 20th through the 26th, 2014 as Arbor Week in Waterloo, Iowa, and I encourage all citizens of Waterloo to celebrate this occasion and the beauty of our city by planting a tree, as long as it's not an ash tree. Right, Paul?
Correct. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you for this proclamation. I guess that's on.
It is on.
Okay. As the mayor indicated, we're in the process of losing thousands of trees in this community, and it's, it's a sad situation, but it also is, thank you, it also is an opportunity for us to rise up and, and plant trees to replace these as that happens. This Friday, as you mentioned, is Arbor Day. We'll have an Arbor Day celebration with the tree planting at Prairie Grove Park with Blessed Sacrament School. Greenseed will be donating a tree for the planting, and we have several other planting projects, compliments of Mid-American Energy. We have Public Works landscaping and tree planting coming up this spring. We're going to replace 28 flowering crab apple trees on Home Park Boulevard, and we're going to plant a lot of trees along the new Sportsplex property. So again, thank you for this. I would like to mention, this is our 30th consecutive year as being a Tree City USA. That's thanks to the council and the mayor for providing us with the budget that we need to have a comprehensive forestry program for Waterloo, so thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks for what you've got. Mr. Hart. A move that we received, place on file and approve the consent. I'm, I move that we received, place on file and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B6.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, council. We are going to do item number two, please, a public hearing. Mr. Schmidt. We have a new appointment in the audience. Boy, you're good. I didn't even notice it on the, who do we have? Oh, Benetta Cole, and we do have Benetta with us. Benetta is new to our Met Transit Board, so that's a new appointment, and we rely very heavily on our, all of our volunteers to step up and help us out on boards and permissions. So Benetta, thank you very much, and I much appreciate it for what you do. Benetta, where are you?
Is that Liz here? I think she must have slipped off again.
Okay, because you're right, I did see her. Okay. She was probably, sorry, but I didn't know. Anyway, thank you, Benetta, and thank you, Steve, Mr. Schmidt, for pointing that out too. Let's get into our public hearings now. Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's for the 2014 lift stations and complaint mowings with complaint snow removals.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two, our lift stations and complaint mowings?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two on tonight's agenda? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Very good, council. Do you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second. That also is a roll call vote?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to Waste Management Services Superintendent for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
First bid is from B&amp;B Lawn Care, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is in the form of a check for $1,500. Option A is for $700, 700.00. Option B is for $800, 800.00. Option C is for $48, 48.00. Option D is $200, 200.00. And option E is $75, 75.00. The next bid is from Cedar Valley Lawn Care, Inc. And option A is for $340, 340.00. Sorry, their bid bond is in the form of a check for $1,500. Option B is for $720, 720.00. Option C is for $85, 85.00. Option D is for $120, 120.00. And option E is for $85, 85.00. The third bid is from Fleming's Landscape and More. The bid security is in the form of a check for $1,500. Option A is for $290, 290.00. Option B is for $340, 340.00. Option C is for $34, 34.00. Option D is for $120, 120.00. And option E is for $48, 48.00. And the final bid is from Robert Hoffley Construction Company of Waterloo, Iowa. And the bid security is in the form of a check for $1,500. Option A is for $295, 295.00. Option B is for $345, 345.00. Option C is for $33, 33.00. Option D is for $50, 50.00. And option E is for $33, 33.00.
Thanks, Larry. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Item number three is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the request of Harris Cleaning, Waterloo, Iowa, for a site plan amendment to the M2P Plan Industrial District to allow for the construction of an 80 by 125 foot, 10,000 square foot industrial building located east of 2366 Newell Street.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number three on tonight's agenda, the site plan amendment for Harris Cleaning? Second time. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time to adopt the ordinance.
Second. Very good, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Counsel, do you have any questions of Mr. King, Ms. King? She is one of the recipients or one of the requests anyway for some CDBG funding.
I don't have a question, I'm just a comment. Please keep up the good work. The people that you serve absolutely need it.
And work that Mike works to try and help the whole city and we're working very hard at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Further comments from counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing said plan and authorize its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
And that's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number five, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the fiscal year 2014 sidewalk repair program, Zone Four and Trail Repairs, Contract Number Eight Six Three.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number five?
Never not.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against item number five, the sidewalk repair program and trails repair contract? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Oops, I think I skipped one.
You skipped one there, sir.
I'm sorry. I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second of them. Very good, and that's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Just like you.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole? Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second. Very good, and I need a roll call vote on that also, please, Madam Clerk. It's got a roll call next to it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just do what I'm told, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one, two, three, four bids tonight on this. There's a base and some alternates and with different amounts by him. I'll let the city clerk read them and then they'll be on file.
Okay, the first bid is from BNB Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is for five percent. The base bid is for $210,995.30, 210,995.30. The base bid plus the alternate is $360,399.23, 360,399.23. Next bid is from Boulder Contracting of Brundu Center, Iowa. The bid bond is for five percent. And the base bid is for $249,200.25, 249,200.25. And the base bid plus alternate is $436,372.73, 436,372.73. The next bid is from Mike Dolan Concreet and Mason Line Company of Waterloo, Iowa. And the bid bond is for five percent. And the base bid is for $231,178.67, 231,178.67. The base bid plus alternate is $385,814.77, 385,814.77. And the final bid is from Todd Van Dorn Construction of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond is for five percent. And the base bid is for $199,149.85, 199,149.85. And the base bid plus alternate is $334,446.21, 334,446.21.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's do the resolutions, please. If we could start with the first three, six, seven, and eight, please, Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution approving memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community School District in the amount of $186,000 to provide technology leadership network services and supplemental technology support services to the city and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Seven, also a resolution approving Cloverdale Park lease with Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for the use of Cloverdale Park located at Longfellow Street and Midland Street for a term of three years in the amount of three dollars and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And eight is a resolution approving submission of Cedar Trails Partnership Grant Fund request for a snow compacting roller to assist and enhance cross-country ski grooming on city-owned golf courses in an amount not to exceed $2,000.
Second. Very good, thank you. Ms. Cole, counsel, do you have any questions regarding six, seven, or eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Just a quick question on number seven?
Yes, sir.
So is this a county-owned park that we're leasing?
Paul, please.
Paul Hitting, Leisure Services Director. It's county-owned property adjacent to County Garage that has been a city park since the mid-'70s. It's, for whatever reason, has never been conveyed to the old Park Commission or the City of Waterloo. At one time, they were contemplating expanding that garage. I don't think that they are contemplating that at this time, but they've just chosen to continue to do it in three-year increments.
Okay, so we've been maintaining this for years, mowing it?
Yes, since the '70s.
All right.
Further questions? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes again.
Oh, yes.
She needed to say it.
The motion carries plus one. Could I have someone do just nine and 10, please? The two ordinances, nine and 10, two resolutions, nine and 10. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to adopt a res- make a motion to adopt a resolution approving survey and engineering agreement with AMET Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa in conjunction with the traffic safety improvements for three high-hazard intersections to include San Morna Drive at La Porte Road, Amesboro Avenue at Downing Avenue, and Fletcher Avenue at University Avenue and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 10, a resolution approving request by Keston Associates on the behalf of Iowa Development Enterprises, LLC for the preliminary plat- of the replat of Summerland Farms Lot One into a 12-lot residential subdivision located at the intersection of Summerland Drive and Dyzer Road.
Second. Very good, counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding nine or 10?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Um, Noel? Can you explain the Summerland Farms situation? I see in the documentation that we have that there's a bunch of missing information, yet we're still recommending that the replat be approved.
I believe we've re- Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, I believe we've received a lot of the information now or in the process of working on that with the applicant. This is part of an overall master site plan. Out there's RP Planned Residence District. This is the northeast corner of that. These last 12 lots are also tied in with our community development state program for down payment assistance. So this has been approved for there, so this will provide more units out there, provide multi-twin home type units in the area that was designated for multifamily or higher density of the planned district.
But we're looking at single-family or twin homes in this area?
These would all be twin homes on these lots, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Noel, if I could, while you're up there, just to reaffirm again, because some of us have had conversations with some of the residents out there about runoff issues and these are not those six-plexes or 12-plexes or whatever has been discussed, correct?
Correct. The, there's a proposal going to the planning commission, there's a proposal, there's some larger lots at the southeast corner and at the northwest corner that they've been looking at for higher-density 12-plex type units. At this point, I believe the proposal going to the planning commission is in the southeast corner as you're out there, so kind of the south end of Dyzer where it ends for some 12-plexes there. That's near the drainage way, these are at the entrance to Summerland at the northeast corner.
These are a little bit confusing right now, counsel, or at least it was to me, because there are actually, there are at least two, possibly three different proposals for the Summerland area. This one, I think, will actually be fairly, pretty amenable to the project. There will be six single-story twin homes, so they'll be in a row, so there'll be six side-by-eaches. It should be relatively attractive and a good fit for that. Some of the other, there's some more questions about, but these should be a pretty good fit. Are there further questions? Nine and 10, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, counsel. Now let's do the next three, please, 11, 12, and 13.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
On 11, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution setting the date of public hearing as May 5, 2014, for approving lease agreements with Janet Kindo Post for a period of 10 years for a property located at, located on Riverside Drive just west of 903 Riverside Drive. And in number 12, for George Ryan and Loretta Ryan for a period of 10 years just east of 727 Riverside Drive for one year, I mean, for $1 until December 31st. And also in 13, for Darlene Yagla, also for a period of 10 years Riverside Drive just south of 509 Riverside Drive for $1 and for all of those until December 31st, 2024. And for all three, instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Very good, counsel, do you have any questions regarding those three items, 11, 12, or 13? Madam Clerk, those are roll call votes, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry. Let's do the last three resolutions, please, 14, 15, and 16. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Larson Construction Company Incorporated of Independence, Iowa in the amount of $3,570,000 and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2014 Flower's Creek Stormwater Lift Station and Dry Run Creek Improvements, Contract Number Eight Forty-Two, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Also a resolution approving award of contract to Aspro Incorporated Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $8,209,211.4 and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2014 Street Reconstruction Program, base bid and alternate A plus Division Two, Contract Number Eight Fifty-Nine, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 16, a resolution approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Iowa Erosion Control Incorporated of Victor, Iowa in the amount of $1,094,138.38 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2014 West Airline Highway Rehabilitation Base Bid Plus Alternative Two, Contract Number Eight Twenty-Seven, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you, counsel. And Morrissey, counsel, do you have any questions regarding 14, 15, or 16?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Did we get more than one bid on 16? I don't recall.
I don't either. Eric, do you remember?
Eric Thorst is here. I believe we did get several. I think it was three.
Thank you. Further questions? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please, on 14, 15, or 16.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, on 14, 16, no on 15.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, on 14 and 16, no on 15.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry. We have some ordinances that we need to address again. Item 17, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 17, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by adding a new Chapter 14, Housing Cooperative Conversion of Title IX Building Regulations, and that's an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by adding a new Chapter 14, Housing Cooperative Conversion of Title IX Building Regulations.
Very good, counsel, do you have any comments regarding item 17? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Good, the motion carries. Item 18, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 by adding additional restrictions for payday loan, delayed deposit service businesses. And do I read the whole thing again?
Uh huh.
No, that's good, motion and a second. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, again, I would like to revisit this item and just ask once again, what exactly it is that we think we're accomplishing with this and who exactly it is we think we're helping, and I'd like to have that conversation.
Who would you like to have it with?
Well, whoever'd like to, whoever'd like to answer it, you or anybody else.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Councilman Schmidt, as I said before, this whole ordinance and the concept of it gets back to what I believe is a basic premise of why city government exists, and that is for the good of the people. And this ordinance says, in effect, that neighborhoods do have a right to say that payday lenders cannot set up within their neighborhoods. It also has defined protected uses, has expanded that, so that around those protected uses there is that 600-foot setback so that they cannot set up around those areas as well. To me, it's a matter of neighborhoods, of people who make up our neighborhoods saying that we have the right to decide that if we do not want these, this sort of business in here, that we can say no, and that's what this ordinance does. It does not in any way, shape, or form take any payday lender businesses out of existence. Those will be there the day after this passes the third reading, just like they are now. It doesn't change that at all. It does not limit anybody's financial ability or financial freedoms whatsoever. This merely, to me, is a way of Waterloo saying to the people that you in the neighborhood have a right to have your neighborhood decisions made that say that I want to protect my neighborhood from these businesses, and that's what this ordinance does. The other thing I think it does, it tells Iowa and our community in general that we do care about our neighborhoods and we do care about what businesses go in our neighborhoods and the perception that payday lenders leave in neighborhoods is not a positive impression. And again, that gets back to improving the image of Waterloo, not only amongst the citizens of Waterloo, but for people throughout Iowa.
Well, and I, again, I think that we talked last time of the 11 payday lenders, I think is the accurate number. There's one of them that's in an area that we would probably describe as a economically challenged area, and that area's been economically challenged for far longer than that payday lender's been there. The other 10 are in commercial districts, so I don't, I don't understand how one has to do with the other. You've attempted to tie them together with alcohol establishments and liquor establishments, and I don't see the correlation there. Case was made last week about some studies from, I don't remember where, about public safety issues with these businesses, and I think our local law enforcement group said we've had absolutely no public safety issues on any of these facilities. Most of them don't have cash, they deal in checks, so there's not an issue there. And again, I don't see how the neighborhood is going to determine this, because the neighbors, the neighborhoods aren't going to be voting what is or isn't allowed to open in their business. I don't, I don't quite understand that kind of stuff.
Councilman Schmidt, I do, you understand zoning variances, don't you?
I do.
Okay, well, a payday lender could ask to set up in some, one of these neighborhoods and ask for a variance, couldn't they?
I would think so.
And the neighborhoods can get together like we did out at 2320 University Avenue and we stopped that liquor store from getting put in at the Hostess Bread Store, didn't we? Didn't the neighborhood do that?
So, I think you had some questions.
That's the concept behind this, but we need the zoning there in order for that to prevail in the future.
And so, at the end of the day, who, who is, or what is this going to do to the folks that use those services today?
It's not going to do anything different. There's, they're going to have their payday lender they can go to. Plus, I hope that there's going to be information that can be given about other venues that can be used that are little known in this area, such as a number of credit unions that supply unsecured, low-dollar, low-interest loans that has not got out in the community, much to speak of.
I don't, I don't know if there's any financial institutions that will approve a non-secured loan. I don't, I don't know that anybody else is allowed to do that.
You need to contact the Iowa State Association of Credit Unions and you'll find out different, Councilman Schmidt. There's at least four in the area here.
And they provide unsecured loans?
Unsecured, low-interest, low-dollar loans.
We have someone wanting to speak at the microphone, I believe, anyway, unless you're holding up the call.
No, no, it's holding me up. Forrest Dilru, 1725 Huntington Road. I did contact one of these alternate solutions that was mentioned last week, and I talked with them enough that I think I pretty well understand how they do theirs. Number one, one of these people goes to them and they want a loan. Minimum loan is $400. So if you needed $25 for groceries, diapers, medicine, or whatever, you're going to take a $400 loan now. And of that $400, 200 is going to be put in what they call a savings account that you can't touch. $20 is going to be called a fee that they're going to take from you before you get your money. You're going to walk out the door with $180. On that $400, you're going to pay 19% interest, and you're going to have six months to pay back $400. And 19% interest. Now, you only took home $180, so in my mathematics, I'm saying you're paying 38% interest on the money that you took home, the money that you could use, so you're going to be paying 38% interest. For my children and my people I know, I don't think that's a real good deal, that 38% interest, when the savers there are getting less than one-half of 1%.
Thanks, Forrest.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I address?
You may.
Forrest, I just, I'm sure you're referring to the Veridian Powell.
I prefer not to mention their name, but that's fine if you want to.
Well, I will. And, because I've talked to them, I talked also to Cedar Falls Credit Union, also involved is Tupaco and there's Public Employees Credit Union. So there's other credit unions that do provide those, what I just referred to as the small-dollar, low-interest loans that are available to people, as low as $50. So, you know, just do some other checking for us, is all I ask you to do.
I had the name of one lady and I got her card, and she said that was the way they do it, and she had not looked at it as being 38% interest, as I do, and I'm sure you will. If you only get $180 that you can spend, that's 38%.
Thanks, Forrest. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Joe Gordon. I'm a homeowner at 510 Wilshire Avenue in Waterloo. I'm also a criminology professor at U&amp;I. I appeared here last week and discussed some of the research that you referred to. And I think there might have been a little confusion. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read that research, but what that research says about payday lending and its relationship to crime is, doesn't relate to crime committed at or in the near proximity of payday lenders. What it refers to is crime that's facilitated by virtue of adding another criminogenic influence in a community. And here's how that works. Many customers, not all, but many customers who come to these payday lenders are pretty desperate people, for whatever reasons. But they might be employed or part-time employed. They might, they might be able to come in with a check. Some are addicted to drugs. There, you know, many drug addicts are addicted or have part-time or full-time employment. So that, but they're desperate for money that they can't get anywhere else, so they go to one of these payday lenders, they get their loan, and then over time, they end up paying exorbitant interest rates that increase their desperation, increase the potential for them to be impulsive, dangerous, engage in, you know, further criminal activities. I think ratchets up the risk to our law enforcement personnel, and just basically, again, adds to the criminogenic influences in our community. And this isn't me saying this, this isn't an opinion, you know, it really is in vogue nowadays for people to think of science as just another opinion that people have. But the research analysis that I gave you last week is really top-notch, really good scientific research. And it demonstrates quite clearly that these payday lend, and in commercial districts, by the way, that these payday lending outfits, even after we control for other community variables, contribute to crime rates in our communities. So I'm going to say again what I said last week, that it's one thing to be tough on crime, and sometimes that's really a good thing to do. I'm not opposed to being tough on crime in some instances, but it's also really good for our communities if we can be smart on crime. And I think restricting the propensity of these, the presence of these outfits in our communities, and I say this as a Waterloo citizen, is really one way to help improve public safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Josh Wilson, 2831 Saratoga Drive. I have a couple issues. First of all, I'd just like to point out to the counsel, I'm a U&amp;I graduate, whereas I respect the professor's research for every research study, I'm sure you all know, there's another research study that's going to prove it to be inaccurate, so I would question who was involved in the research study, what city it was looking at, and all that. I don't buy into one study, but the real issue I have here, Councilman Morrissey said that this isn't interfering with anyone's financial freedom. I would argue it's interfering with the financial freedom of anyone who wants to open a payday lending facility in the City of Waterloo. If we're going to start here with restricting businesses that are regulated by the state, they're not violating any laws. If we're going to start trying to be big brother and big sister to businesses in town, I mean, why don't we go further? La Porte Road has a Wendy's, a McDonald's, a Taco Bell, a Taco John's, only one subway, no fitness centers in there. I don't know if you're aware, but since 1970, the American I don't know if you're aware, but since 1970, the American obesity rate has tripled. We've got, let's see, one in five children between the ages of six and 17 are now considered overweight. Are we gonna start regulating where people can eat? I understand that some people may take advantage of these institutions, and they may get in over their head, but I don't think it's the city council or any government bodies' responsibility to step in and babysit these people. I, I feel sorry for them, but they have to make these decisions just like I do. And I think you, I think you're wrong in saying you're not stepping on anyone's financial freedom, because I think we need to see this city grow, and businesses that come in, we shouldn't be regulated. So if you're gonna look at payday lenders, look at the other businesses in town that have scientific studies that prove that they're hurting the community as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'm Renata Sack. I live at 414 Sunset Road in Waterloo, and I just want to ask a question of all of you. Do you want Waterloo to be known as a visionary city, as a happy city, as a city that embraces good sport, that embraces parks, that embraces culture, music, as well as galleries and museums where we're just sitting? Or do we want to be known as a city that has 80% of very, very low-income people living here, all the children are on free lunches and help in school, and everybody needs help to get from Monday to the next Monday because they don't have enough income to carry the expense of their groceries? Anybody who does that, anybody who needs a $25 loan to get from one day to the other can never, ever come out of that again. It's a never-ending tale of misery, and you get deeper and deeper and deeper into debt. And that's not something we should propagate, and we should condone, and we should make possible. We should do all we can to have good businesses in our town that employ people well, on well, on good income, and we should not give more credence to payday loaners. Please think about it very deeply.
Thank you, Renata.
Hey, my name's James Hart. I didn't come here today to talk about this issue, but as long as it's brought up, I do have a few things to say. I agree with the lady that was just up here, these people, they are desperate, I agree with the professor too. People that get these loans, they're desperate, they don't have any other way to get the money. For whatever reasons, they can't go to a bank or credit union usually and get a loan, 'cause they don't have collateral or a cosign. So what they do is they go to these payday loans, which charge an exorbitant amount of interest, and then they go back every time, because, as the lady just pointed out, they don't have enough money to pay their bills anyways, and they either don't have a job or they don't have a good enough job to pay what their monthly expenses are. So what it creates is a vicious cycle. You're enabling these businesses to rip off the poor. And I agree with you.
Excuse me, I forgot your name. Yeah.
Joe Gordon.
Joe Gordon, I, I agree with his research, and I agree with the lady that was just up here. I've seen it, I've known people that worked at these payday loans. They have their regular customers, they come in every day, they go into work, and the doors are still locked, and these people are lined up sometimes. You know, it's the first day they're eligible for their next loan. And it's, like I said, it's a vicious cycle, and unfortunately, our city allows that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Ladies and gentlemen, if, council, do you have any more conversation? I mean, if there's obviously, the reason we have seven people, the reason we have a democratic process is that we agree to disagree on some items, so let's take a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. And we will not even ask for a suspension of the rules, we'll address this for a third reading next week. Item number 19, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move, we receive file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo by adding a new section 302-8-1, Parens 3B56, front yard parking citation to the International Property Maintenance Code, Article B.
Very good, there's a motion, and second on item number 19. Council, do we have questions and comments and concerns regarding this item? Would somebody like to?
Can we have a little overview?
Sure. Maria, would you please tell us who you are and explain item 19 to us, please?
Maria Tiller, Code Enforcement Foreman. Basically, what we are asking is to do away with the 10-day notice that we have actually been giving the Waterloo citizens for parking in the front yard. 10-day notice given, 10-day notice is complied with. A week later, we're being called back to the same property for the same violation. And is, it takes less than 24 hours to remove their car from the front yard. 13, 14 days later, we're back at, at a lot of the same properties. So what we are proposing is a parking ticket for $40 versus having to repeatedly go back to certain properties, and it's a parking ticket no different than what we do for parking over the sidewalk or parking on the city roadway.
Very good. Mr. Schmidt?
Did you see the email from, who we got this afternoon, from Dustin Whitehead about his issue over on Wellington and the barriers?
I am very well aware of Mr. Whitehead's issue over on Wellington.
Does this address that?
It, in the other section, it does actually address this, and what we are doing is, because R1 and R2, single-family dwelling homes, are restricted from parking on the grass, where your R3 and your R4s, which are your multiple duplexes, apartment buildings, they have no restrictions. So basically, what we are trying to do with the $40 parking ticket, along with, since you brought that up, along with revising the R1 and R2 zoning, to have R3 and R4 also added for the no parking on the grass. You have a lot of homeowners that feel that rental properties have a little bit more leeway as far as their parking issues than property owners.
Okay, further questions, Maria, on item 19? Thank you, Maria. We may have further questions on, on other ordinance changes. Item 19, though. Yes, sir? Just give us your name again, just, just for the record, please.
James Hart.
Thank you. And your address, Mr. Hart?
That just does address front yard parking, correct? I mean, because I've had to park out in the street, and I've had several of my vehicles ruined or severely damaged because of standals and just poor drivers, or police force is very limited, and what they can do to hold people accountable for the financial damage they caused, there's always a good story, oh yeah, it wasn't me, somebody pulled in my driveway, backed in, I'm not responsible for that. Anyways, I like a lot of cities, especially my neighborhood, park in the backyard. I bought turf blocking stones to, you know, keep off the grass, or keep it from wrecking my yard, make a big mud pit. Thing is, though, is I wanna make sure that this ordinance only affects people that park in the front yard.
That's correct, isn't it, Maria? This, this is just the front yard. This, this ordinance just is front yard parking, Mr. Hart.
Right.
Okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote on item 19, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
I move we suspend the rule.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
We'll take this up a third time next week. Item number 20, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 20, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by amending Chapter 3, General Penalty 1-3-2, E Administrative Fees.
Second.
All right, we'll need some clarification on that also, Maria, please.
Maria Tiller, Code Enforcement Foreman. Basically, what we are asking for the administrative fees is, to clarify it a little bit, we had in the current ordinance that has said any code violation was subject to administrative fee. However, you have things like waste containers, the weeds, and the snow removal that have their own separate administrative fees. So with the word "any," we were asking to take the word "any" out and strictly put for the $100 to the $300 administrative fees to the 10-day notices, and leave the waste cans, the snow removal, and the weeds totally separate.
This is actually a benefit, isn't it, to the citizens, Maria?
Yes.
I mean, this, this could save, save them some money.
It eliminates any type of double.
Double billing, double charge.
Double billing, it takes it out of that.
Okay. Very good. Council, do you have any questions regarding item 20?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lind?
The administrative fee on like a waste can.
The waste can, after the first notification, the first administrative fee is 100, the second one is 200, and it goes not to exceed 500.
Then on this one, it's talking about the 100 and 300 administrative fees.
Right. So basically.
The 10-day notice.
The difference?
It says 100 and 300 administrative fees are for 10-day notices.
Because your waste can is not a 10-day notice. Your waste can is a 7-day notice.
That's what I mean. What's, what's the 10-day notice?
10-day notice would be like junk, garbage, vehicles parking in the front yard, vehicles parking in the backyard, any maybe zoning ordinance that we do, we give a standard 10-day notice.
And that costs $100?
Not the first time. If we go back for any type of violation after the first notice is given, then a $100 admin fee is added.
Okay.
And then for third and subsequent, it's a 300.
Oh, I got you. All right, thank you.
Very good. Further questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Hart, make a motion, suspending the rules. Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion fails. We'll take this up next week. Also, item 21, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move, we receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, by amending Title VII, Public Ways and Property, Chapter 7-1-2, Prohibited Acts and Conditions, Section B, Snow and Ice Removal. That's elimination of notice after the first violation for snow removal.
Very good, thank you.
Second.
And there is a second, council, do we need explanation on this?
Yeah.
Maria, please.
Maria Tiller, Code Enforcement Foreman. Basically, we, when we first started out with this change, what we were looking at is vacant structures, absentee owners, dilapidated houses, vacant lots. Code Enforcement spends a great deal of time with the weed and grass and the snow removal every single year, and a lot of the calls that we get are pretty redundant when it comes to the vacant structures and the vacant lots. What we were proposing is that we are able to post properties one time, and we also wanted to include your actual residential areas as well. Post properties one time, given for snow and grass removals throughout the year, and for any subsequent time that we would have to go back, that we are just able to see clearly that it is a violation, follow the process that we do without having to tag that property again and go back for another reinspection.
Maria, would that be the same, would there be a notice for grass and then another notice for snow? Or would, once you've written a notice, it's good all year long for both? It's one for grass, one for?
One for grass, one for snow. For some reason, the, the weed and grass one did not get put in here.
Okay. This is just the snow. I'm sorry, okay. Oh, okay.
Wasn't supposed to include? I thought we were gonna table this.
Okay.
No, it's the other one.
This was just, so. So this is only snow?
Yes. We'll have to come back with weed, it's a different section.
And then I just got a quick question for the 10, okay, so elimination of the 10-day notice.
Not, not altogether, just after the first one?
After the first one. I'm trying to work my way through this. How, there's, there's currently a snow ordinance on file.
Yes.
And what is that?
Snow ordinance is once we post it, you have 24 hours to remove it.
So we got a 24, 24-hour notice to remove the snow, and now we have a 10-day notice? I'm just trying, what?
We, we don't have a 10-day notice for the snow and the weeds and the grass, no.
Maria, who does this notice go to?
The notice actually gets posted to the property. No notification is sent out like we normally do on a 10-day notice. We normally would send out a copy to a landlord or to a property owner that does not reside at that property, but with the weed and the snow, alls we've ever done is post the property anyway for a 24-hour removal on that particular item.
Well, I'm just wondering, what about those situations where the landlord has lease agreement with the tenant, tenants, or tenant that says that they are responsible for grass and/or snow or ice removal? What happens in those situations where the tenant is responsible for it, and then the tenant moves?
That is technically between the landlord and the tenant.
If, if the tenant hasn't notified the landlord or vice versa, isn't, couldn't that be a potential problem?
No.
And I think we, we wanna make clear, everybody's saying weeds, grass, and snow, and this is not, this is just snow and ice.
It's not ice.
We are not talking about long grass or weeds or summertime, we're talking about snow and ice removal. That's it.
Yes.
Okay? And, and there is no 10-day notice on snow and ice?
No.
If we get a complaint, or if you see a violation, you post the property, they have 24 hours to remove it?
Yes.
And if they don't, they get a ticket?
If they don't, then we send.
Then you, I'm sorry.
We send in the contractors to remove the snow and ice.
And then they have to pay for it?
Yes.
And what you're asking for is that subsequent violations, you don't have to post it for the 24 hours. You can just send in the contractor and have it removed, and they, and the land, the property owner has to pay for it?
Yes, as long as we show that it is clearly a violation.
Okay. I, I guess, council, do you have any more? I have one question.
I have a question.
Okay.
So it, it snows, they don't, somebody doesn't remove the snow, say it's a tenant with responsibility, they get a 24-hour notice.
Yes.
Then it snows two more times, you can go out and have a contractor remove the snow those times.
Yes.
And what if it snowed the next day, and the next day, and the next day? We're just kinda piling on here for landlords that are not, don't know that they got the notice yet. It just seems like we're compressing the violation to kinda hammer somebody that may not be aware that the contractor's gonna come out and remove the snow for him.
The way that we have done the snow and ice removal is the same way that we are going to continue to do it now, which is just the posting of the property. We have never given a 10-day standard notice, we have never sent notice out to landlords or to other property owners. We've always posted the property. Snow and ice also becomes a safety issue when it comes to bus stops. We had quite a few intersections this year where we had, even on West Ninth and, I think it's West Ninth and Grand Street, we had a child slip out onto Ninth Street. So we are not going to change that standard. The only thing that we are asking is that we give one notice per season, per property, versus having to go back five, six, seven, eight times and post the property, go back for reinspection, send out the contractor. This way, it would ensure that we get quicker response from our contractors to get such areas, such as a lot of these bus stop areas that we had a lot of issues with this year due to the amount of snow and ice, to have it cleared in a more reasonable time.
That reasonable time is 24 hours or 48 hours or how long is that, that they have to clean it themselves?
They have 24 hours from the time that we post it. They have 48 hours from the time that the snow stops. 24 hours, so you're actually giving 72 hours. You're giving three days to clean off your snow and ice before we send the city contractors in.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
Yep.
Yes, sir?
Forrest Diliboo, 1725 Huntington Road. As the owner of properties that I don't live on, I think this is rough, really rough, like Councilman Lynn stated, because I should have an opportunity to clean up the mess if it's there or force my tenants to do that and such. And without giving me any notice, even the first time, you are, you know, subjecting me to maybe hundreds, thousands, I don't know how much money, and I wouldn't even know it. I don't drive by every one of my properties every day, and even if they did post it, that doesn't mean they're not going to tear it off and throw it in the garbage. You know, I should have a right to defend myself or take care of my properties. In the near future, you folks are going to know who lives in all of our properties. You're requiring that for the building inspection department. So you could, you could branch off of that and say, okay, Forrest owns that property, we will call Forrest. You don't have to send me a registered letter, you don't have to hand-deliver it to the door, just contact me and say, hey Forrest, the snow needs shovelled. But to drive by and say, oh, it needs it again, it's a judgment call, number one, but you're going to convict me if you send somebody out to clean it, that's like a conviction, and you're going to fine me, that's the finest for the people to clean it. And I think we should have a right to defend our rights and maintain our properties. Like I say, you've got an excellent opportunity coming in the near future because you're going to know who lives there and who owns it.
Thanks, Forrest.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I have no problem with the weed, the grass and the snow, I do have a problem with the ice. This year, I think I brought 50 pounds of the Friendly Free, 10 Below Zero stuff, and I was constantly putting it on out there, trying to get rid of the ice. I'll be 75 years old, I can't be out there with a pick and a shovel, so I do have a problem with this, you know. I try. So I think that they ought to set forth some effort if you're out there putting 50 pounds of this Friendly Free stuff to try to get, I don't want no mailman or paper boy to fall on mine, I don't want anybody, but at least I try to get rid of it.
Thanks, Jim.
Patricia King. I'm not a property owner, I am a tenant, and I'm a disabled tenant, and I try to get the snow up all the time. Sometimes, even after I finish the driveway and I see the trucks driving around, it's like they wait until I get through. The snow plow comes along, piles it right back up, piles it on the corner, and I, in order to get around, I have to go to the bus. I have to dig out in order to get to the bus. So sometimes, it's not always the landlord's or the tenant's fault that snow is piled where it's piled, so that's something else maybe need to be looked at.
Thank you, Patricia. I thought they just did that to me.
No, Mayor, they don't. Maxine Tisdale, 438 Cotty Street, Waterloo. I want to make sure that I understand this, because this code enforcement lady here, I've seen your people on my street. Last year, the property down the street was vacated, and nobody sent anybody, it was tagged, but you didn't send anybody out there to clean it. I paid somebody because I slipped and fell going down to visit another neighbor. So my thing of it is, these people that take people's houses for nursing homes, the state has or the nursing homes have, and if you're tagging those and you don't notify them, they're leaving that property with that snow and that ice there. And if the neighborhood people don't clean it up, it doesn't get done. I know, I lived in one.
Thanks, Maxine.
Jack Black, 227 Downing Avenue. And I wanted to ask this young lady, with city property, do you send them out a notice if they don't clean the sidewalk?
Yeah. Jack, you need to talk to us, please. We'll answer your question for you, if you would please. What was the question?
I just was wondering, does the city send out a notice to a city-owned property if they don't plow? The reason I ask, the parking lot that's in back of our church, which is no longer ours, but all winter, and I've been, we've been told we don't park there, well, we do park there. We cleaned it ourselves, the sidewalk and parking area in there, because it was never cleaned. And the sidewalk on the extreme south end, we don't touch, which still belongs to the city, and that has not been cleaned at all this winter. Thank you.
That, I would appreciate it, Jack, if those conditions happen in the future, that you do notify my office or the city.
Okay, well, I mean, that property has been given to someone else.
Yeah, we, but wherever it is.
Yeah, okay.
We need to do, take care of our own backyard.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
You bet, Jack. Further comments from Counsel?
How are we going to know that the, either, that the person responsible for cleaning that is made aware of that? How are we going to know that? And how are they going to know that? That they, that something didn't get done?
This is the, I mean, this is the same process that we have used for a long time with the snow removal and the weeds. The snow removal, we have always posted the property, always posted the property, and we do not require, there is nothing that states that it has to be all the way down to the cement. There's nothing that says, all it says is for people like Mr. Chapman, who get out there, and yes, we had a huge problem with ice this year, but for those people that got out there and they laid sand and they did salt, basically what that ordinance actually states is that they have to make a reasonable effort to remove that. It's not saying that they have to get out there with an ice pick and try to pick that ice all the way down to the cement. But we have not changed, we're not changing the way that we posted it, how we post the property. We've been doing, that has been done ever since I've been with the city five years.
I still have a problem with it, Maria. I just have a problem with it in rental properties, that the landlord may not be responsible for it all and never is notified, especially with their tenant who decides to move, and then nobody's cleaning it up, and he got an absent landlord. So how's that, how does that address that situation?
Thank you.
Jim Wallis, City Attorney. Maybe I can help answer the question. Nobody can be 100% fair with this. The ordinance has always been an attempt to balance the interests of the public and the neighbors with those of the landlord and the owner of the property and the tenant. We can't tell, looking at a house or any property, whose responsibility it is vis-a-vis the tenant or the landlord or some contractor. We can't tell whose responsibility it is, but the neighbors and the people who use that street and sidewalk have a right to expect it's going to be cleaned. And so we put notices on the property, just like we always have, and wait 24 hours. Now, this is already 48 hours after the snow has stopped, and if that hasn't been cleaned, the balance here, the balance that city councils up till now have always accepted is that the public and the neighbors have a right to have that cleaned. If the property owner and their tenant have to fight it out over who pays the ticket, let them. But meantime, we've got to clean the sidewalk. So that's what the balance is here.
Thank you.
Can we take a vote, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Can I make a motion to table and refer to committee?
There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table and refer it to a committee. We'll take a roll call vote on that motion.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Very good, the motion to table fails. We'll take a motion, please, on the motion and second that's on the floor. Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Very good, that motion passes. There is a second motion to suspend the rules if somebody would like to make it.
I move we suspend the rule.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Very good, that motion passes. There is a second motion to suspend the rules if somebody would like to make it.
I move we suspend the rule.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
I have a question. It's a motion to pass, file considering pass for the first time in ordinance amending. Then it says motion to suspend the rules, and it is motion considering pass for the third time. Is there supposed to be a number two? You know, it hasn't been my meeting today, but-
That last line should say motion to pass for the second and third time.
Okay.
And it's, the word "second" has been left out of there inadvertently, I'm sure.
Well, my motion to suspend the rules is no.
Very good. The motion to suspend the rule, did we go around? Fails. Okay, so we're on to item number 22, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to instruct Superintendent of Traffic Operations to prepare plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for the purchase of video detection cameras for I-380 ramps at San Marnon Drive and I-380 at Mitchell Avenue.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding item number 22?
That was a real quick-
Mr. Schmidt, Sandy, would you tell us what item number 22 is, please?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic Operations. These are video detection cameras. What they are doing is replacing the loops that are in the roadway itself. The DOT is destroying our loops with their reconstruction program, and so they are in turn purchasing the cameras for us and we're installing them.
Whoa.
Right. They're not monitoring cameras or anything.
Further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution, preliminarily approving plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And that is a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Very good, the motion carries. Uh, last item for business, number 23, Ms. Cole.
I move we instruct Community Planning and Development Director to prepare plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera, for asbestos abatement services for the following properties, 3137 Independence, 2375 Independence, 4012 Lever C Road and 425 Almond Street.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding item 23? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I move we receive and file plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I move we adopt a resolution, preliminarily approving plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And it's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
I move we adopt a resolution, setting date of hearing and bid opening as May 5, 2014, and instruct city clerk to notice, publish notice of plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Very good, that motion carries. And ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It is time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor or council, now is the time to do so. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Randy Herrod, 111 Highland. I have a packet here for each one of you to sort of expedite this a little bit, I'm going to say. But let me first say that this is going to be about the animal control thing. And my reason for doing this is what the mayor mentioned, in fact, the last couple of weeks, I think, that we want to make sure that this gets in, not stopped, but in and well done. I will also say that one reason I think you should listen to me is I have been involved with animals, dogs in particular, since the early 60s. I've been involved with about seven or eight animal organizations across four states. I have been training dogs since 1971, and I, for a while, was, two different times, I was on the Board of Directors at the Humane Society and was interim director for a while between permanent directors. So let me first ask here, has anybody been through the new Waterloo Animal Facility, the new one that's going to be over at 11th and Black Hawk? Anybody on council?
Yes.
One.
Mr. Hart?
No.
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 I'm through, whoever else wants to come on up.
James Hart, again. I, I'm a musician, I also ride motorcycles, and those two things might not seem related, but unfortunately, I have been, I've been turned in for making loud music in my house. I went out to Radio Shack, I bought a decibel meter several years ago, and I understand that the city ordinance, for noise ordinance, which is specifically for the house, you guys have been very detailed, a decibel meter, waiting of A, and it can't breach 80 decibels[1323.47]